Athens City Council, we have a series of committee meetings tonight on this Monday, March 14th at 7:05 PM. We'll be leading off with transportation and followed by planning and development. We have City and Safety Services Committee, Finance and Personnel Committee. And just so people are aware of the agenda format tonight when we're in these series of committees, we have the particular agenda items that we're addressing. It's different from a regular session of council where we have an opportunity at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak on different topics. So it's a little more restricted to our agenda tonight. We'll lead off with transportation with Chair Michelle Pappy.
Thank you.
Our first item for discussion tonight is Boogie on the Bricks. And will there be anybody presenting for that tonight? Thank you. Come on up. This is a regular event that's held during the summer in Athens. It's a community event. And they're here tonight because it does require a street closure on Court Street. So we'll let you go. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Judy Weimer. I'm the event coordinator for Boogie on the Bricks. Thank you for allowing me to present to you this evening. I apologize for not having any materials for you to look at. You would think after three or four years of doing that, I would have that prepared. So I guess I'll just start off by requesting the date. This year, the board has decided to change the date, assuming the request is approved. And we would like that date to be Saturday, July 16th. And we're hoping that the street could be closed at 6:00 AM. It's traditionally closed at 7:00. We understand, you know, whatever is approved, we will work with. But it has been a little difficult for us to get the event up and going since we have to set up and, you know, and tear down all in one day. But we're hoping to have the event actually occur from 12:00 to 11:00 that day. And then the 1:00 AM closing time on Sunday, or the street opening back up, that's worked out pretty well.
So you want it at, was it 12:00 or 1:00?
1:00 AM.
Yeah.
Opening back up is like that's been, we've been able to get out of there pretty quickly. It's a lot faster to, to clean up than it is to set up, for sure. Everything else that we're planning on doing this year is pretty much similar to recent years. We're planning on having art and merchandise vendors, food vendors, a kids area which would be in the parking lot next to attractions. And we'll be collaborating hopefully with Athens County Children's Services as well as the Dairy Barn to make that happen. We plan on having the, for the, the street closure, continuing on with West Union on Court Street to West State Street. And that's been working out pretty well for us as long as that's continuing to work out for the city. We have two stages planned as we have in the past few years. One being at that intersection of West Union and Court, and then the other, West State and Court. And continued collaborations with organizations such as Rural Action to do, to continue on with the Zero Waste Initiative for this event. Hopefully some street performers, things to that nature.
Have you coordinated with the Athens Uptown Business Association? Have you discussed it with them this year?
No. But we, I definitely will make note of that.
I'm gonna defer to Member Butler on this one.
Thank you. Yeah, I would encourage you to connect with them. I received a phone call from the Chair of the Athens Area Uptown Business Association, their request for us to consider looking at a different placement of the stage.
Oh.
That the stage placement has, can be potential hindrance for the rest of North Court Street. So that it's challenging to get by the stage and the sidewalks to then access the rest of the other end of North Court. That was the commoner concern from the Uptown Business Association. I don't know if the mayor's office has heard any word of that or not, but...
Well, you shared it with us today.
Oh, yeah.
And again, they'll want to coordinate with AUB and look at it. It's interesting because you have businesses that say, "Don't close the street because it affects my neighborhood." Then you have other businesses saying, "I want this business and this in my area." So we'll look at that.
Okay.
But we wanted to bring it forward today to at least get that discussion so that we can have an ordinance in the near future for their July closing.
I know that the main stage of...
Well, I was just gonna ask you to, if you want to describe what the stage currently, where it has been over the past and for viewers and audiences.
The main stage is our larger stage and most regional and local acts. That is located at the, at West State Street and, and Court Street. And that tends to, because of the fire lane, we have to keep open the fire lane and allow so, so much of the, the street to, to be accessible. It has to, and with the stage itself needing to have, be leveled, it has worked out most, has worked out well there, hugging kind of that corner next to, I don't know what the name of the establishment is right now.
The bar?
J-Bar.
J-Bar.
J-Bar, yes. Yes. So kind of hugging that corner right there has, has worked out well for the stage. And then the purpose has been because of the, the size of it and...
And then the, the fire truck could get down on the other side is what you're saying?
Yeah. Because we have to keep, we keep everything on that left side of the street so the fire lane is, is nice and straight and it remains on the, the right side of the street.
Okay, good. And where do you plan on having the vending this year?
The vending will, we're planning on inviting a few more food vendors and, and beginning, so having enough space for the crowd close to the stage, but then beginning vending somewhere around where the attractions parking lot is and continuing on until the second stage. And the second stage is by Witz.
And I assume you can't move the stage up, let's say, to Washington Street? Is that because...
If we did, if we moved the stage up to Washington, then we would really only be able to have one stage at that point.
Because of the noise?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because it would interfere.
Right.
And if we moved the stage to the, to the end of Court Street, that would not allow for us, a level, or, you know, a level street or the stage according to the sound engineers that are the, the stage and sound people that we work with.
Okay. I have a question for administration. Brew Week, when is that happening this year?
It's mid-July.
June?
Yeah. It'll be the 23rd of July.
Not June?
No, July.
So these are both July events?
That is what the board is requesting to change, yes.
So you were traditionally...
We, we've moved around.
Right.
We've moved around. And I believe the last couple of years, we were in June. So this was definitely a decision of the board to, to change the date for several reasons. One of them, of course, we can't predict weather, but we hope that the rain has really put a damper on, on our event. We lost significantly last year because of the rain. Now, of course, July is a little bit of a drier time. August would be, you know, drier as well. We wanted to make it to where we had one nice big community event in each month. And we recognize that this, this may interfere, or maybe we could collaborate even more. But we wanted to get the ball rolling and the request going because if, if the city doesn't approve, then there's really no point in discussing it.
Well, you know, I, running through my mind right away, I'm looking at my calendar right now, but running through my mind is closing the street down two weekends in a row.
No.
No?
No, it would be, it would be two weekends, a week apart from each other. Two, in other words, Boogie on the Bricks.
Two Saturdays in a row, is...
No, it would be, no, because Brew Week starts on the 22nd, which is a Friday.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, and it runs...
No, it would be, Brew Week starts on the 15th. So it's actually, that'd be the first week of the week, last call would be the following Saturday.
So you are correct.
Mm.
That it would be two weekends in a row.
Two Saturdays in a row.
This is interesting that it overlaps with Brew Week, but that's a whole different story. Interesting.
So I'm gonna strongly encourage that this be discussed with AUB because I think they really do have a right to have some say in this in terms of all the businesses that are downtown. I mean, that's just my thought, sitting here tonight, hearing it for the first time and what the whole, what everything looks like. Because that's a lot of closure on Saturday, two Saturdays in a row. Though Brew Week is very successful here in Athens as well and brings in a lot of people from other places. But I do think they should be a part of the conversation, I would say.
If I'm not mistaken, traditionally, the Boogie was the celebration of the Brew Week at the end, back when they were together?
It's, from my understanding, Boogie on the Bricks happened in 2014 originally, and then the next week, Brew Week and Boogie kind of combined. And it was the, the end of the, it was like the big celebration at the end. And then for a while, then there was a decision made to kind of separate the events. And with, with this proposal by the board, it is now, we would like to have that discussion of possibly collaborating again.
You mean, perhaps joining on the 30th?
Not, not joining, but I suppose just being, being another event within...
I'm sorry, 23rd?
Within the event, the Brew Week.
I have a friendly suggestion for you.
Yes.
And that would be that the Brew Week, or the Boogie Board of Directors and organizers meet with the Ohio Brew Week organizers.
I...
Because this is, this is the first I've heard of this. Boogie on the Bricks did used to be the anchor to what was Brew Week, but that was back when Brew Week was a seven-day-long event and there was no closing.
Right.
So this is two large events, two weekends back to back.
I agree. And again, we, I recognize that. And I wanted to even see if it was a possibility, knowing that it would be two street closures. It's, it's kind of...
It seems like all the entities need to be talking to each other. And, and we're kind of, maybe a little later down the process.
Okay.
I mean, but I think coming here was, was okay because we are talking about it openly and, and all of that. But certainly, the Downtown Business Association, Uptown Business Association, and the Brew Week people need to have...
I agree.
Yeah, and even beyond Brew Week, I know that there's, there are other businesses throughout the region that are also kind of, kind of collaborating with Brew Week. And I can see collisions all over the place in terms of...
Absolutely.
Where people are opting to go or not go. It's just, this is an organization issue, and I think that that should have taken place, should take place now, should have taken place even sooner. But I think there's still time to, to reach out, to have the, both the organizations start talking to each other if the intent is to, to collaborate and move forward.
I agree. Thank you for the consideration and recommendation.
Member Butler.
Thank you. And we may find, after discussing with the Uptown Business Association, that they're open and pleased with the idea of another event happening in July, back-to-back, because there's not as much happening over the course of the summer with the university thing on the semester system. And, I mean, they have their own semester, summer, summer school, but there's less people in town. But again, I agree with what's been stated by all my colleagues in the executive branch. It'd be good to have a discussion with the Business Association as well as Brew Week and...
So as the process works in terms of an ordinance, normally, we bring it up the next Monday for an ordinance. And I don't know if you all can have your meetings and everything before that, because then we, it needs to be passed 30 days before the event.
Right.
So you have a little bit of time to meet. And I personally would like to see something in writing from the groups that there has been some coordinating effort in, you know, so that we have that documentation.
Definitely.
So I think you have a little bit of time to coordinate here and, and get your 30 days in, in our three readings.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on a weather note, just real quick.
Yeah.
Trust me, even though, even though we battled the weather last year, it's just, welcome to the new normal.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Our next event to discuss this evening is the King Midget event, which is scheduled for the weekend of August 12th, the entire weekend. And there are several events that go along with that. And this is an international event. It happens every 10 years. For you, those of you who don't know, King Midget cars used to be built here in Athens, Ohio. So do we have someone here to come up this evening to speak? Thank you. Mr. Goines and Mrs. Goines?
Anne.
Anne, thank you.
Nice with you.
Thank you. So tell us a little bit about what you're requesting for this year's event.
Well, this is the 70th anniversary of the King Midgets. So we put one on in 2006. We're asking for street closures, you know, for the Hill Street line. I'm thinking if we could do it, like move in, you know, for a couple hours, one down past the college, or where Bromley Hall is right there, and turn and go up High Street for a couple hours. But we're going, we're asking this on account of, we think we're gonna have probably over, what, 200?
They're hoping to have 100 cars in Athens that weekend.
100, so it's a big event. Everybody, you know, is really looking forward to coming to back to Athens for this.
Sure.
And Anne and I is responsible to doing this. We do our internationals in different states every year. So this is gonna be a big event. You're really looking forward to coming back to Athens with the cars.
Okay. So that would be Saturday, correct?
Yes, Saturday.
The High Street Challenge is on Saturday, the 13th?
Yes.
Okay. And so what times are you thinking that you'd want?
I'm hoping to start it off at 9:00 in the morning and be done by 11:30. But if we have 100 cars, that may be stretching. If you figure three minutes per car going up that hill, and everyone wants to see everyone else in and out, so, you know, we can do the best we can. I do have 66 rooms already booked in Athens at this point, and we still have two advertisements to mount. So we may very well have 100 cars on the road.
Okay. So right now, you're talking about 9:00 AM?
About 9:00 AM.
And that would be for a lineup?
Um, yeah.
Or is that prep time?
That would probably be a lineup, I believe.
I have a few questions. We have a few questions. The 100 mile-per-gallon challenge is, according to our notes, to be on Friday.
Yes.
So Saturday is the High Street Challenge?
Yes, it is.
I do not have a route for that. Do you?
No. I think Ron lives, got the route for the 100-mile challenge.
We have the route, we do. We have a map on the 100, 100...
Right.
...mile challenge. We have a postcard. But we, but, so you generally need High Street, obviously the hill, what it, what it addition?
Well, probably, I'd say Union Street, Depot, to keep the cars from coming up that direction towards High Street. And then with being so many cars, I'm, I'm figuring if we get the lane going over the Hill of Congress, that we could, you know, double line them or triple line them down through there and maybe use a bike path coming up Congress Street, the hill right there. You know, just leave one lane of traffic open, you know, towards Richland Avenue. And once this event's over, you know, even on Washington Street, we like to have Washington at Congress there blocked off those, you know, county cars going straight through. If they're coming up over High Street, we'll have to have a closure there, Depot Street.
So basically, all around the middle school?
Yes.
Somewhat, yeah.
So we'll have to, we need a map.
Does the council have a map of the High Street Challenge? I don't. I have a map of the 100...
100 mile.
...mile-per-gallon challenge.
Okay. So in 2006, we closed vehicular traffic, Union Street between South Congress and Depot, High Street between Union and Washington, Washington Street between High and Congress. And this was done later in the day. This was an 11:00 to 3:00 PM event. And they banned parking on South Congress Street between Union and Washington, High Street between Union and Washington, Washington Street between High and Congress, and the metered spaces on the south side of Washington Street between South and Court.
The metered spaces are for the trucks and trailers, I would say, are some of those parking spaces because we don't leave any car behind if it was to break down and we can't get it running. We're gonna throw it in the trailer and take it off. So it's not sitting in a road.
We'll probably have just one truck and trailer just...
Just to help.
...all the way.
Okay. So this is a pretty extensive closure.
We just need to look at it and look at our support staff and what can be in place for that. It sounds like the ordinance from when it happened in 2006, it occurred...
It's a good template.
A little bit earlier, as you know, that is also the same evening as Bounty on the Bricks. But that's just closing the one singular block on Court Street for that activity as they prepare. But they'll be done.
At that time, we'll be in, we're heading to Nellsville, the train ride up there, heading the plane. So just as soon as the High Street Challenge is over with, the streets can be opened back up and we'll be out of the, out of town at that point. So we're asking, you know, a block between, I'd say, two and a half, three hours at the most. But, you know, actually, I think we'll have it done in two.
Okay.
But we're just asking for a little more time, just in case, so get all the cars gathered up, you know, 100 cars, and try to get them...
Sure.
Heading in the right direction, so...
Sure, sure. And then on Friday, we do have the map and where that would go. Council members, the route is basically all of 682 from Union to Richland, cross the bridge at Richland, come across then on Schaefer, and then go back to Union. It's a loop.
But I think what we're gonna do, we're starting at Siemens, and everything would be a right-hand turn.
Right-hand turn from there?
Yeah.
Okay. 100 cars, that's...
Yeah, there are some challenges, though, with this 100 mile-per-gallon...
Well, the thing is on that, I think what they're gonna do, it's not really gonna be 100 miles. They're gonna put a pint of fuel in, and they're gonna try to estimate, you know, how much, we told them we couldn't have a car broke down along the side of the road routing the intersection or anything like that. So what they're gonna do is just put like a pint in, and they're gonna estimate about how many miles per gallon today. You know, at one time, they said King Midget Model 1 got 100 miles per gallon. Even they wanted to try to see, you know, what the original cars, the original engines will do and how much of a gas mileage they'll get.
Can you give us a sense as to how many cars would be taking that...
Not the whole 100. I, I think it's just gonna be, because I'm taking, I'm taking a group of them just as soon as we, on Friday morning, out to shade to Ralph Cowerson, to the country. So there'd just be very few cars there. I'd say there probably wouldn't be no more than 25 or 30 cars at the most. But everybody else will probably get with me, and I'll lead them to shade and then back into Athens to the King Midget plant.
Okay. There is some concern on the police department's part with being able to, to guard those crossings so that it is continuous because this, part of the challenge is not idling somewhere at a traffic light.
Right. They wanna continue around.
Not mistaken, but there is concern on, at least from our police chiefs. Can, can, do they have enough coverage to make sure that you can get through the traffic lights for those things to continue?
I think we talked about that earlier, there's gonna be like six or seven officers, you know, all-duty officers, that King Midget is gonna, you know, pay for their services, you know.
Well, the police chief has indeed expressed concern to us. That's why we're bringing this up. And there's some discussion about just making it rules of the road.
Yeah.
And doing a lot of outreach that says that during this time, this is what will be occurring. Frankly, that might draw more people, you know, just sitting in their chairs and watch.
They're hoping.
But, yeah.
I'm thinking it's gonna be a pretty big event. Like I say, when we was in Bristol, Tennessee, we had 117 King Midgets in Bristol. And they're wanting to try to make this one of the biggest, we have heard people from California, Florida, and all over the place, New York is coming in. So, you know, we've got a multitude of cars coming into Athens for this event. So we're hoping we can put this on and make it successful and do it again 10 years.
Well, my biggest encouragement would be that you make sure you are vetting with the mayor and the safety service director or their designee and the information is, because there is a lot to put together here. This is pretty significant in terms of closures and the impact on the city. So we just want to make sure, and I really appreciate you coming this early to start talking with us, because I know it is a mid-August event, and working with everybody. So our police chief, he's online with us now, and now he needs to figure out how that can all be worked out. So, mayor?
Now you've really sparked my curiosity. How far can one of these go on a pint? You said it's a pint of gas that you put in?
Yeah. They'll, like I say, they, they go quite a ways on, on a pint. Like, three gallons, like put three gallons in in a day's time and run that car all day, you know, these events. And then when we fill up, we, no more than a gallon, gallon happen, or with the three-gallon tank. So they, they do go quite a ways on fuel.
We do get 50 miles per gallon, for sure. Whether we get a big engine or a little engine, so we're still averaging 50 miles per gallon at least. Depends on how many downhills we get.
So you're gonna, you'll get some mileage on a pint, then?
So we really appreciate all your effort. It will be a nice tourist-type of event for Athens and bringing in lots of folks. That's, that's great. We love that. And just continue to work closely with the mayor's office and the service safety director on getting all these things. Is there something else that you wanted to ask?
Yeah, there's Olden Library, they're, they're putting a King Midget history in the Olden Library. And on a Friday night, when, when we do the cruise...
Right.
We want to try to see if we can get as many cars as we can, you know, lined up on Park Place. They're gonna have a ribbon cutting and everything there. And then after we leave there, we're gonna get, be there about 4:00. And around 5:00, we'll have the crews in on Court Street, and they're gonna have the one block just for the King Midget cars. So what I'd like to do is, is to line up that event and have that ribbon cutting on Park Place, and then we'll continue on the court with the Friday night cruise.
So I think what you were requesting was some type of possibly parking, maybe parallel parking there, which I believe a car still could get around on Park Place. It's tight, but...
They wanna put as many there as they can so they can get a picture of the Olden Library and the ribbon cutting and the cars in front of it. So, I mean, whatever we can do, that's, they'll just have to deal with.
We've had to rebound traffic on Park before because of infrastructure improvements and repairs there. We'll just, if we can, we'll add that to look at it as well. But the request, as it stands now, sounds as if it is requesting legislative action. So we'll look at that.
Okay. So this is gonna be one big piece of legislation in terms of this event for the weekend. We'll do our best to accommodate. It all sounds great. Lot of photo moments there.
Thank council very much for taking this into consideration. Like I said, they're really looking forward to this 70-year anniversary. So, you know, it's gonna be a big thing for Anne and I to put this on. Pat and Earl helped us in 2006, and Earl passed away, and they're helping with that. So it's a test, I tried to pull this off, so...
Is there any other council members with questions or... Okay. Thank you very much. So our next event is the American Society of Mechanical Engineers Human Powered Vehicle Challenge. So gentlemen, would you like to come up? Go ahead and introduce yourself and give us your presentation.
It's a pleasure. So first of all, thank you for having us here. My name is Cody Pettit, and this is...
Matthew McKenzie.
We're part of, it's really long. So it's the Ohio University American Society of Mechanical Engineering Human Powered Vehicle Racing Team. In short, it's OUASME. So that's how we'll probably refer to it during this. So we're a student-run organization, part of the mechanical engineering department at Russ College of Engineering. And so last year, or I guess... at Russ College of Engineering, and so last year, or I guess this year, we're in charge of, or we've been selected to host a national event through the American Society of Mechanical Engineering, and it's called the Human Powered Vehicle Racing Challenge 2016 East. And so we're really excited, we're bringing in between 350 to 500 students, judges, and competitors, and it'll be people from, so last year at the competition, there were teams from Egypt, from Canada, from Puerto Rico, from Mexico, so there's teams from international universities as well as teams from all around the U.S.
Yeah, so ASME puts on five competitions around the world. There's one in the east, one in the west, one in Latin America, one in Mexico, and one in Egypt, just as a kind of overview. So last year, we attended the east competition down in Gainesville, Florida, which was our first year attending. And there, we performed pretty well, and we also, we actually brought home the sportsmanship award, which we were very proud of, bring that back to Athens. So this year, we are in the process of manufacturing our vehicle, we've gone through design and analysis, we're in that process. And something we wanted to improve on was last year's competition. Whenever we went there, it was fairly bare bones, kind of thrown together at the last minute, they had some issues there. But we wanted to really bring the personality of Athens and the community involvement into it, so that's something we're looking to do. Not only is this weekend meant to enable college students to pursue their careers in engineering, going through the entire process from design to analysis and manufacturing, this is also gonna be able to help students and youth kids in Athens' community, both involving them in STEM. They can come out, watch, talk to different teams, talk to them about their bikes, get them involved and interested in engineering, but also push them to pursue challenges within the engineering community and the community in general, help improve other people. And not only does it help students, but it's also gonna help the community in general. We're expecting between 300 and 500 people coming in for the weekend, so they'll be filling up the hotels, patronizing the businesses and the stores, restaurants here in Athens. So we really think this is, this would be both a great thing for the city as well as for the students, and something they can really gain from.
So off that, it's March 13 through the 15th, May, sorry, May 13 through the 15th.
Yeah.
Oh, we'll pass that. May 13 through 15, 2016, and so the weekend kind of, is kind of outlined, we have Friday, everybody comes in, they have their safety inspections. On Saturday, we have the drag event, which takes all day, and that's kind of what we're here to discuss. And then Sunday, there's an endurance event that's held on over by the convo. So Saturday, what we're here to request is part of a street closure going from, it's on closure of Mill Street from North McKinley to South Green Drive, a little section at the end for 6:30 a.m. to about 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 14th.
So McKinley to...
North McKinley to South Green Drive of Mill Street.
Okay, so you're gonna use the bike trail?
We're using South Green Drive, the new section, going from Bobcat, Bobcat Drive, Rufus Street.
Rufus Street.
Rufus Street to South.
Got it, okay. Okay. So you just need a small portion of our city street?
Correct. And then we'll be rerouting back on the bike path.
Yeah, so that'll look like, basically, the outline of the drag race, is there's two vehicles side by side that go running down a 400-yard stretch, see who can go the fastest, and then we'll be rerouting them down the bike path, so two vehicles every five minutes going down the bike path and coming back to Rufus Street intersection.
And when you say vehicle, you mean?
Yes.
Something that is, you know, like an oversized bicycle, or?
Yes, yes. These vehicles are mostly recumbent bicycles, there's some that are two wheels and some that are three wheels. As far as width goes for a vehicle standpoint, most of them are around three feet wide, just as a spatial.
Any questions, council members?
Yes, it sounds like a great event. I do have a question about involving the students, the STEM students, and these will be students from our local, from the county schools, and has contact been made with them?
As far as students coming, it's more of a community coming out, watching, maybe being able to talk to the different teams, why they did certain things on the bike. But we've also been in, we've been in contact with schools, we actually went out to the Plains Elementary School just last week and presented to the, to two groups of students there. So that community involvement is carrying over outside of the competition as well.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
It's not, so, I guess not specifically a STEM outreach, we're just wanting to, so we'll be advertising and promoting it in the local high schools for them to come out to the event, so they can, kind of encourage them and answer questions and really disturb their curiosity for engineering.
Yeah, I'm looking at your list of events, I see a parade of the vehicles, and then qualifying rounds are from 8:30 a.m. to 10:00, and then 10:00 to 1:30 is the women's drag races, and then the 1:30 to 4:00 is the men's drag races. So it is an all-day type of event down there, and you have the fields, and you have a nice space to do that, nice area. Just for reference, this is the weekend after OU graduation.
It should be two weekends after, I believe, because April 29th is graduation, April 29th, May 1st, so there should be two weeks afterwards, I believe.
And the mayor has a question, too?
Okay, you're right, two weeks, two weeks after. Yes.
Mayor has a question?
Mayor, sorry.
Not so much a question as a comment, I'm just, I'm so intrigued by this, especially, who put this together to where this is a segue right off of King Midget and removing my attention to the other ones?
That would be Debbie.
I, I'll be there. I wanna watch this, this is intriguing to me, and I also have to figure out a way to keep the two of you here in Athens, creating new human-powered King Midget in the future. But this is, this is, this is great, this is the kind of stuff that I just kind of think I'll want to do.
He's a sophomore, I hope he's here for two more years.
Okay.
I'll be around.
So you guys, you had, how many experiences have you had in other communities? So I imagine you're gaining some information from those organizational events.
As far as like STEM outreach, or as far as participating?
No, as far as this event?
As far as participating in this event, last year was our first year. However, we had, one of our graduate students, Cody here's a graduate student as well, actually came from a small school in Texas called La Trino University, where he competed, so he kind of brought that here. We're looking to expand that.
So this is our first time?
Correct. This is our first time hosting.
Hosting.
At the, so actually, when we received the sponsorship award, they put out a request to any school that would be interested in hosting the event, so asked our team, we took a team of nine down there last year, and nobody else had contacted, and there were no other applications, there ended up being three total, but we were selected by the ASME Board, the National Board, to host the event, because we believe that Athens has a great personality, and last year in Gainesville, there's a lot to offer there, but we were just confined to a parking lot the whole time, and it was really boring.
Have you reached out to our tourist and visitor bureau people?
Yeah, we've been working with Page Los, I believe.
Okay, great.
So, we've been working with them a lot.
Awesome. And I imagine the engineering college is behind you?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Couldn't do without them.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So we'll have an ordinance go forward next Monday on this. I believe, is there any additional information we need for the ordinance? I think we're good.
I think we have.
To get it done in time, so we have the 30 days in. But you don't need to come back, I think we, if we have all our questions answered. You want, we're gonna closure at 6:30 a.m.?
Yes.
Do you think that'll be, event start at 7:00 a.m.? It's not a lot of...
Will they measure the meters?
No, shouldn't.
Having clear traffic, this is basically closing it down an hour before, and maybe should be coming.
Because we should be able to set up everything on South Green Drive, at least off to the side until that road gets closed and then fill it all up.
Okay, okay. So 6:00, 6:30?
Maybe 6:00, I wanna get at least an hour.
Okay, so we'll do 6:00. And then reopen at what time?
6:30.
6:30.
6:30 will be fine. Member Butler?
Thank you. Yeah, again, I appreciate you gentlemen presenting this to us this evening. I'm trying to brainstorm in my head and think about any other organizations that might be able to be involved or engaged, whether it's the elementary, high school, middle school level, so I encourage you again to...
I have your email, I will, the science person at Athens High School who coordinates their science fair and everything, I will get you her email.
That'd be great.
And they just won the, the district, Athens High did the district science fair for the school.
Was that in Clippin, or the other day?
Yes, it was.
I believe we actually got some people judging that.
So they're, they're very interested in, and...
That'd be great.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from administration? We do, we have a miscellaneous.
We do, we have one. This came up already in committee, I believe, a couple weeks ago, and that is the ARC, the Appalachian Regional Commission funding that's out there.
We did not discuss it, Steve. We have, none of this, that's been discussed, it was tabled last week.
Let's discuss it.
Let's discuss it.
Let's discuss it. It, this is for a project, this McKinley extension, essentially from Stimson, it's the old railroad bed that runs next to Sonic and Mill Street Apartments, I don't know the name, whoever calls that little road, whatever it is along there, but it's an improvement for that, it's $500,000, and it's just authorizing the administration to accept this company which applies for the funding to receive it, it's kind of a patchwork, kind of funding that has been looked at already for project improvement, people are aware or not aware that this is on the plan with Ohio University's master plan, is being one of the ways into the university, the city we've been looking to start improvements, the Tri-Valley, Stimson Avenue improvements. So this kind of fits with all of that, there is a time-sensitive element at Grant. Our city engineer has asked for an extension on being able to apply for this, and that is the 21st, which next week, this would have to go forward with suspended rules as well as the like emergency clause to be able to... To receive this funding.
So last week, there was a draft resolution that was, we were gonna discuss, but we did not, and we have some letters of interest or letters of intent, and that would be Ohio University, and the ARC is the Appalachian Regional Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess the question, also the Office of Jobs and Commerce.
Jobs Ohio.
Jobs Ohio. But I think we probably need to discuss why we're upgrading McKinley, McKinley Extension. I don't know that the public is aware of where that is. I guess we could say Sonic Restaurant, there's a railroad bed there.
Sure.
And that railroad bed then goes towards Ohio University, and they would be vacating some parking lots there, and then, so that would all be upgraded is what the point of this is, and then there's also a manufacturing zone next to that.
There is, there is, as well as, there's other businesses through that corridor as well.
Correct.
That will all be positively impacted by this.
Right.
With the growth of the taproom, Jackie O's brewing facility, which I personally have toured through, that, you know, it's, it's needed down that area to where we can get a little more traffic flow going through that, that area, but also, again, as I mentioned a minute ago, and that is that Ohio University has wanted to have that, the gateway into the east, southeast portion of campus, and this would fit with that as well.
I think mentioning that, the, the road that everyone is currently using is actually a private road that goes along with the apartment complex, Mill Street Apartments, so that's really not a city upgraded to our standards road, it's just kind of a travel-through that people use to get to South Loop Drive.
And as I understand it, it's, it's a 100-foot right-of-way through that whole area down there, which is OU's property. Ohio University owns that property from Stimson all the way up to McKinley, and again, this will be a major improvement to that whole thoroughfare.
Okay. So again, this is a resolution, or is it an ordinance?
It's an ordinance.
Now it's an ordinance because we're expending design and engineering funds, is that?
Well, it's an, it's an ordinance to apply for this ARC funding, is what it is.
So the resolution last week was inaccurate?
Was not. There was some misinformation or some confusion, as to what was the proper way to move forward with the resolution, and I think at the end of the day, if the county were to be doing it, that's all the county can do, is put forward a resolution. For us, it's an ordinance to go forward with what's applying.
And our share is how much?
$250,000.
Yeah, it's $250,000, would be the, on the city's end, but the whole project in its totality is about $1.9 million. There's a lot of moving pieces to this, which again, I have to give a lot of praise to our city engineer for being able to stitch this together once again.
There's a pledge from...
Again, as you mentioned, Jobs Ohio, I believe it's $300,000 from Jobs Ohio, it's $200,000 from ODOT, it is $500,000 from ARC, and then there would also be a financial commitment from the university, on the university's side.
Do we know what that commitment is?
$750,000 if we get the commitment from Ohio University.
Mayor, would that then impact the Lewis Drive connection, or would those two, on South Green Drive, how would we, we work at the university, make an extension on South Green Drive, would those two interact, or will this, this new roadway be fairly close to that, or?
No.
Or not close?
No.
It punches in directly where the mechanical engineer students are gonna be in their human-powered vehicles, basically McKinley, would punch in right about there.
Yeah, through, into McKinley, and, you know. And there's a lot of planning in this process, too, by the way, because I know that there were some, some who were asking about, you know, bike path, thoroughfare in there, too, but again, to stress the points that, and this is using Andy Stone, our city engineer's words, 100-foot right-of-way is a rare thing to come across in terms of the width of something, and so therefore, there's a lot of space to do some very positive planning through that whole stretch, that would be well thought through as the planning process moves forward.
So just to go through the dollars again, 300,000 is from ODOT, and then 200 is from Jobs Ohio? Or did I have a bad...
I think it's one or the other, it's $200,000 from either Jobs Ohio or from, from ODOT, 300,000 from the other, 500,000 from ARC, $250,000 from the city, and then $750,000.
It's 100,000 from ODOT, 300,000 from Jobs Ohio.
Thank you.
But it's a, you know, it's a wonderful package, different combination of funding to improve that area.
And so there is, yeah, there are some timing challenges with this as well.
Right, the grant is due, correct?
The grant was submitted without this, with the idea that this will be forthcoming.
Okay.
I believe the mayor explained that, so.
Okay. Any other questions from council? I guess we won't talk about Stimson Avenue, people may have questions later regarding that, so I think the first thing is to apply for the grant and see if we get it. Okay. All right, so this will come forward, and will it need to be suspended?
It will, we'll need a suspension on this, as well as an emergency clause, I would imagine, since we need to roll this thing forward, we've been given a reprieve, a little bit of wiggle room with ARC.
So the, so the extension is March 21, so next, next Monday night? Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's already a McKinley there that goes into River Park Apartments, so there's that section, and then it makes a jog into the Mill Street, whatever you wanna call that, Mill Street Way, and so this would just connect up off of Stimson, make it more direct and make it a city, city street up to city standards and for traffic. Member Costas?
Thank you. Just, just for clarification, it's gonna stop at Stimson? It doesn't include any type of, anything on Stimson?
Not, no.
So, just, just up to Stimson is where the terminus of this project is?
That's where the terminus of this project is.
Okay, got it.
Correct.
Thank you.
No. This includes a roundabout on Stimson Avenue.
Well, I started, I brought that up, and then you said we'd talk about that later. I didn't say a roundabout. So, let's, since it's open and out there now, let's discuss that. So, the rest of this project is, I didn't realize that was a part of this funding stream, was the roundabout.
Well, yes. And it's always been a goal, as you know, to improve that, especially when they did do improvements to the whole loop and how they're doing their event traffic. And that's the, that's why this roundabout, it's not a mini roundabout, it's not a little West Union roundabout, it's a full-blown...
It's original Avenue-type roundabout.
Roundabout, in order to move...
On Stimson Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Where the new street would meet.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So, there's also land, you know, from the university that's involved in this as well, so. And I think in our long-term planning, that whole six-year plan has always shown a future roundabout as another gateway entrance there.
Correct. We were just not on the same wavelength, because I thought that was part of the project, so when I said that, okay. So, member Costas.
So, do, do we have crash data where that, where the, where the existing road currently dumps into Stimson Avenue? Does anybody know what kind of, I mean, I assume there's issues because there wasn't really much study, and then one day it was open, you know?
That's interesting.
As I understand it, our city engineer does have crash data for that intersection that you're talking about.
It's really not intersection.
The one that has the modeling, it...
Crash data, though, is, is if all of a sudden you, you start increasing vehicular traffic through there, if it was just as it exists now to where it's, it would become McKinley that all of a sudden just punches into Stimson without some kind of traffic flow calming, which is, you know, roundabout can do that, plus also eliminate congestion. But that's, I don't know that he's actually done that kind of, whether that level of modeling has been done, but he certainly has looked at the crash rates in that, right in that area.
And then on that, similar to what the mayor indicated, just if you watch, you know, the traffic that comes in and out of that now, that it has been open, it's, it's a potential hazard as well, so.
Member Nelson.
And do we have vehicular traffic? Is it not that there are, I think, seven, am I right, and that there are seven, seven thousand cars a day?
That sounds about right for Stimson.
Stimson, seven to 10, I think, so heavily traffic.
We also know that, we also know that as people come off the highway, cross the bridge, that they're traveling at a little more rapid rate of speed, and so a roundabout right there, too, will slow down the traffic before it actually comes on to Stimson proper with the businesses and all of that. I think that's a pretty dangerous area there, even with the ingress, and yet, you know, people coming and going there, there's still an issue with the speed coming off the highway and crossing the bridge onto Stimson.
And I would add, too, that that, that curve that's just right there by Sonic, that your sightlines are also reduced. So, so, yeah, anything we can, we can, you know, I guess I consider myself a resident of Stimson Avenue, and so anything we can do to, to help mitigate any issues that we have there would be great.
Right. I did want to follow up on Service Safety Director. That has been a part of our long-term planning for the Athens area, and so it's been discussed off and on for the last years, but only recently did the funding come together by all the different entities. And with the opening of South Loop Drive last year, South Green Drive, that really kind of put the pressure forward as well in order to improve the traffic flow there. Member Butler.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo the same concerns, sentiments that have been communicated. I would support moving forward with this. I think there's a lot of safety and beautification efforts that I think will enhance this. I think a roundabout will, will enhance our entranceway to the community, to the city. We see that in Richland Avenue, the roundabout there and the bridge is very pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular friendly. I think that it's a win-win all around. I don't know if, I mean, Public Works Director has been able to consider the bridge enhancements, or, because we are seeing more and more students walking across the bridge to Fong Hill to take in sights and sunsets, and a lot of cyclists are also heading out of town that way as well.
Yep. I believe that's an ODOT bridge, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And unfortunately, it's in good condition, so it does not merit the funding.
And it's just outside the city limits, is that right?
Well, it's our responsibility to maintain at some level, but it, it doesn't need the degradation that we could actually go full-blown for the bridge improvement. It's not that we won't look at that, that this, this funding is outside of that.
Okay.
So, one other question. This, the amount of funding would necessitate, or would it be available for art funding as well, like the, is that correct, 1.9 million?
Again, the percent for art that's in your ordinance hand, which has a cap, and no, we have not discussed yet that, but we'd like to do that towards the end of a project so there's not a conflict, so.
All right. Other question? Member McGee.
Oh, I, I just wondered whether there, was anything connecting this project with the development of the ball fields on the other side of the bridge there?
I don't, no, I don't think that that, the ball fields, are you talking on...
Soccer field.
The north side of Stimson?
Soccer field.
Or south side?
On the other side of Stimson. Stimson goes the...
Frisbee Field?
The ultimate Frisbee.
The gravel parking lot that goes off Stimson Avenue, so...
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, that has, the roundabout engineering, I'm sure, may go a little bit into that, but that is Ohio University land, so...
It will, it has to.
Yeah, it's to make the roundabout large enough. Member Costas.
Okay. I did have a question for administration, so the, the roundabout will take into consideration the bicycles and pedestrians in that area. It gets a little confusing for them right now.
And the spur, we understand that, that comes off.
Yes, yeah.
It's all being tracked.
Okay, great. I figured, but I just got to ask.
That's a great question, because you're not alone with that concern. But again, I think that's the beauty of, of having such a huge easement through that, that corridor there that's going to make a lot of space to do some creative things with bike and ped traffic safely.
Member Butler.
And we do have a street infrastructure tour, I believe, tentatively planned for April 1st, is that right?
April 4th.
So, I think in the afternoon, and obviously, we can also direct some more questions to Public Works Director at that moment, too.
Any other questions on this?
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Done. Thanks. Let me watch Training and Development Committee, and the vice chair, Councilmember Reisner, is chairing this tonight in Chris Paul's absence.
Thank you, Madam President. Our agenda here, the first thing I see is the lot-split abfall subdivision. And I believe we have a memorandum that came up through the Planning Commission dated March 7th, and states that on February the 18th, the Athens City Planning Commission voted to recommend a property transfer, lot-split for the abfall subdivision within the three-mile limit of the city. Road frontage is being granted via an easement, so it requires a variance from City Council. And then we have, I have copies of the paperwork.
They have a closing at the end of the month.
Looking this thing over, the only thing I really popped him out, out at me is the application itself, it's been changed from minor subdivision to major. Is there some...
The easement changed it. Had it been a minor subdivision, it would not have had to come up to you, but the, the fact that it needed the variance kicked in the other regulations.
Okay. Would you care to speak to it?
I believe you were there. It's, this are some of the lands that were the AEP that they disposed of, and this one essentially would have been land-locked. So, they went through the process of obtaining an easement from the adjacent property owner in order for them to access that. They did indeed place on to the abfalls that they would be responsible for maintaining that easement in order for access to their land. And again, if it did not require that easement, it wouldn't even come forward to you. They have tentatively scheduled a closing at the end of the month, so they are seeking rapid processing of this, which essentially is one more...
Rapid, you mean suspension of the rules and emergency clause and so on and so forth? Well, I honestly don't have any questions. Yes, Councilmember Jennifer.
Thank you. I'd just like to know where Tedrow Road is.
You're asking me?
Anyone who can answer?
I think it's close to Brookville.
I see that it's Waterloo Township, but...
I was going to say, I shouldn't do this, I should, since I'm on the phone.
Sure. This map is not very instructive.
Okay.
I want to say it's outrunning.
It's a little spur-off of Salem.
I think we have someone in the audience who's an expert on this, if you'd care to come up and speak.
Oh, good, thank you.
Evening, council. I am Ben Apple. This is my lot-split. Tedrow Road is off of Salem. If you are coming from the 56th side of Salem, it is, it's probably the second road on the left, just past Haynes Ridge, has the little dead-end township road, which is all of, it's in Athens Township, but this particular property is in Waterloo Township. The line is very close to the end of the road there.
So, you're turning left off of 682, or right off of 682?
Right off of 56.
Right.
At Union.
Right, and then you're coming up 682?
No.
No.
Okay, so you'd go out to the Kooch Club?
Yeah.
And then you would, you would hang a, you'd hang a right at the, at the T-intersection there, and that Salem Road that comes up over the top?
Oh, got it.
So, just past the radio station?
Got it.
And then Tedrow, is that the, the first one on the left, then?
Tedrow, it's...
I'm sorry.
I think it's the second one.
Second one?
There may be...
Is it, is this...
No, I take it back. It is the first one on the left.
Is it, is it still on the ridge?
It is, you go down...
Yeah, it drops, okay.
Yeah, Haynes Ridge is the last one on the right.
Yep.
You go down into the hollow, and it's the first one on the left there.
Okay.
Okay.
And I do have maps signed by the engineer's office, and I'm not sure, I think Paul Logue has one that's signed by the Planning Commission. I don't know if you all want these.
We couldn't sign it.
Sure.
We couldn't sign it.
Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm just going to say that the reason that you're here is because you just happen to fall within the three-mile limit.
Correct.
Okay. The actual impact upon the city proper is somewhere between nil and zip. I mean, is that, am I over-exaggerating that?
Yeah.
So...
Zero and zip.
Okay. So, as far, actually, what we're doing here is we're, we're going through the motions, we're dotting the i's, we're classing the t's. And unless someone has some major objection to this, the thing should go forward.
I don't have a major objection, but just a point of clarification, the Planning Commission hasn't signed those maps yet because we can't until this takes place, and then, so, just...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just FYI.
So, just before I sign, I'd like to see a map.
Sure. I can show it to you, Ann.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Want to see mine?
Now, this Paul and I were kind of on a, we needed a large-scale map like this, or if we could get away with a legal-size piece of paper. This is the cover page. This would outline the easement, which I have documents signed by all parties, myself included, and a survey done by Ken Highland, who's a district surveyor. This particular survey was done by Tim Lynn, Management of Engineering, who did all the surveys for AEP for this particular project. So, I guess really, is a large map required by you all to sign?
Might actually even be easier for our records and storage if it's the legal size.
Okay. Okay. That's not a problem at all. Not a problem.
Okay.
Call that a waiver of informal malhe여. Since we're with Hudson, we're similar, but if we're able to, you know, tabloid.
Okay.
Okay.
I can definitely go to the engineer's office if I think, can...
Move it down.
What's that?
Just move it down, just don't want to see it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the witnesses?
Okay, this is Max. Thanks for being here. That was perfect timing.
Yes.
I really answered that question. And it didn't require a street, a street closure, so we're happy about that.
You sure you don't want one?
No. Not this time.
Wellhead Protection. We have an amendment. I believe we have another expert here.
Member of the council, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Director, nice to talk to you all again. I'm Mike Cooper. I work for the Athens City County Health Department, and I'm a member of the Source Water Protection Team for the City of Athens. And periodically, we, as a body, get together and we look at the ordinance, look at what we've gone through in the previous year, and look for weaknesses and places where we think we could have missed the ordinance. I believe the last one was in 2009. We changed a few things. This particular topic deals with agricultural operations in the source water protection area. Primarily, we're talking about the Armadale area. It's really the only big acreage that's suitable for this, and we've had a few requests over the last couple of years to conduct farming operations down there, and we felt that the ordinance, while it addresses certain activities regarding pesticides and fertilizers, we didn't feel that it addressed specifically enough this kind of agriculture, especially large-scale, anywhere from 80 to 100 acres down there is potential farmland. So, we looked through source water protection ordinances around the, around the state of Ohio, and really found that none of them particularly addressed this. We were kind of surprised about that, especially over in the western part of the state where a lot of source water protection areas have agricultural land sitting on top of them. So, this language is basically from scratch here, and we wanted council to review it and make recommendations based on the language we presented. I'll just kind of quickly go through the points that we're looking at here. In the first paragraph, we talk about mixing and storage of bulk chemicals, and those are addressed under Title 39, and Section 3901, 05D9 states that there will be no bulk storage or mixing of chemical fertilizers and pesticides in the source water protection area. So, our first point here is that if we're going to allow this kind of activity, all of this mixing, it has to occur off-site, and nothing can be stored on-site. And then we are requesting from whoever would like to conduct operations down there the following details. First, their location within the wellhead protection area. How many acres are we talking about here? What kind of crops are we going to be raising? Corn and soybeans have been the two primary crops that have been presented to us. We would like dates of all the operations, specifically detailing what activities are going to take place. And Bullet Point 5, I think, is probably the most important here, because we want a comprehensive list of what kind of chemicals you're going to be using in your operation. And to us, the important point here was justification for the use of chemical controls in any agricultural operations there. So, we would like to see soil data indicating where it's deficient and what the plan is to make it more suitable for farming, what rate fertilizers will be applied to achieve the needed results. Again, Bullet Point 6... Again, Bullet Point Six, proof of proper calibration of all the application equipment. This is required under pesticide law in the state of Ohio. And licensure status of all service personnel to be conducting operations if they are controlled chemicals. We need to know who the licensed applicator is and that all of that is in order. And then we're also interested in stormwater runoff and erosion control because there will be some cultivation of larger acreage down there. So we wanna make sure that that information is included as well. We would like to have this all presented to the source water protection team a minimum of 30 days before the anticipated start of operations so we can review it and not make any necessary changes. And on the back of the draft, we noticed in the definitions section of Title 39, there was no definition for integrated pest management. So we looked at a few different definitions of IPM, and the one that is put forth there was from the United States Food and Agriculture... or United Nations Food and Agriculture Organization. We felt it was the most comprehensive definition that we could put in the ordinance. Also included with the information we gave you tonight is a list of... And this came from the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service. We were looking for a list of a rating and ranking of common pesticides, fertilizers, fungicides, to address their potential... their pesticide, what we call the pesticide leaching potential. And it's a pretty comprehensive list. We would like to have this be what we look at when somebody submits a proposal to us and see how it ranks in this listing. According to North Carolina Extension, if a chemical has a pesticide leaching potential of 40 or less, it is considered to be low leaching. By that, I mean, it's not gonna migrate out to the soil and potentially impact groundwater. So those are the kind of things we'll be looking at. And I think that's about it. But I would like to feel any questions, if you guys have any about this. I know we've had a chance to know it, Jennifer.
Thank you. Mike, I appreciate your work on protecting our water. And I must say, looking at a list like this, it's terrifying to think that these things might be in our water. And so I'm curious to know, are there currently agricultural operations? When I think of agricultural operations, I think of, you know, you call it cows out on the pasture, not, you know, butylate, acetylate, all these chemicals that I can't even pronounce...
Sure.
...being applied to our soils and to our crops. And I think it's pretty frightening to think about those things being used in our wellhead protection area.
Sure.
So are they currently...
Currently, there are no operations down there, and we've had nobody approach us this year. We did have requests last year for 80 acres of corn to be planted down there, and they wanted to broadcast glyphosate or Roundup as a beginning instead of doing... They're pushing toward no-till farming. So the idea was to burn back the vegetation on the top so it doesn't compete with the crops. We had issues with that, and...
It's interesting on this list, Mike, that it says very low.
Yes. And we've done a lot of looking at that compound and have been kind of surprised ourselves. We are not making the provision to the ordinance or the ordinance itself chemical-specific. We're trying to keep the door open. We would encourage organic farming, conventional farming methods down there as opposed to broadcasting of fertilizers and pesticides on a large scale. Some of the direction we're going, this was based on the study that was done by Egan and Associates, and it was a golf course proposed to the same area. And there are similarities. This is not... You know, this kind of conventional farming would not be as chemical-intensive as a golf course or a recreational area. You'd have a lot more concerns there. But we are concerned about the total number of acreage and the volume of pesticide that would be applied, even though it would not be in concentrated form and it's prescribed mixture by the label. We have concerns about it, and we wanna make sure that we protect that area. The Armadale Wells Field supplies the vast majority of the water for the city of Athens, so it is a precious resource, and we wanna make sure that we do protect it to the best of our abilities. This has been reviewed by our groundwater consultant, Egan and Associates, and we've also received input from Ohio EPA on our approach here as well. So we're very interested in what you all think about this and how you'd like to move it forward.
So as I understand the process, this is part of our code that would become... It's a proposed amendment that would be added to our wellhead protection?
Right. We would like to place this in Section 3901-07. Currently...
Did you say 39 or 30?
3901-07 is... And I flagged that in the copy of the ordinance that I gave you. We would like to have this inserted as Paragraph B and then shove everything else down one. Paragraph A deals with general pesticide and fertilizer use, but we want it to be more specific with respect to agricultural operations.
You've answered my one question about whether or not it had been reviewed by any other agencies, and so thank you. And thank you for something, as we were commenting before the meeting. For me, who's a layperson about wellhead protection management, this was understandable, readable, and compliments to you all. Easy reading, I think.
Like I said, it was from scratch. We didn't have much to go on, but we hope, you know, perhaps we set a precedent here for other source water protection programs around the state.
And I think that's what I wanted to speak to, was the fact that there aren't a lot of wellhead protection areas, I think, around the state. And so the fact that this happens to be land that was farmed in the past and, you know... So the fact that you all did sit down and put it together, and I assume the law director's been a piece of this, so...
Yes. She has had a chance to review it.
I'm, again, really... It's very important that we pay attention to this.
And again, we're not trying to discourage agricultural activities, but we do want people to be mindful of what we're playing with here.
Mr. Mayor, you had a question?
I just wanted to mention that the law director has also looked through this as well. And as I look through this, I think this is being really responsible as stewards of our wellhead protection, you know, in particular things like not being able to mix or store on-site. There's always the chance in agriculture of having spills and whatnot.
Sure.
This eliminates that as well as following the SDS.
Right. So again, we... My contact information is filed in a pattern.
Yes. I just wondered, is there anything in the wellhead protection plan that would limit the kind of commercial farming, like hog farming or anything like that?
Right. There is a specific prohibition in the ordinance regarding animal feedlots, confined animal feeding operations. Would we permit something like that in the source water protection area? I... It would involve some very serious discussion if somebody wanted to put a whole herd of cattle down there.
I had one other question. I noticed on the penalty, it's a $500 per day or $500 penalty. With the proposal, as I read it, if somebody is supplying pesticides, say for instance, do you interpret that as being one $500 penalty or on a daily basis, since you can't wind that up?
Sure. Right. As far as what a penalty would be for violation of the ordinance, that would be determined by the courts, by the law director in the courts. As far as the source water protection team goes, we issued notice of violation and timeframe for compliance. If we're gonna step beyond that with our authority, it would involve the law director and the court system.
Do you know why it's limited to $500, though?
No. That is the original language in the ordinance.
Are you thinking cleanup, Member McGee? Are you thinking cleanup costs as well?
Well, I saw the cleanup costs, because some of this...
Damn it.
Some of this stuff, if it's put on your land, how can you clean it up?
Right.
So I can see the question of whether it would be a $500 fine for a violation of this, and is that it? I mean, is that really any incentive to...
Sure. And under Paragraph B1, it does say each and every day during which such illegal location activities shall be deemed separate offense.
But the problem I see, and I just wanted to point it out, and I'm not sure whether anyone's addressed that. If the... If what you're dealing with is trying to prevent the application of the fertilizer or pesticides or anything like that, that's a one-time thing. Say they apply it one time.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's a $500 fine, so if you say, you know, to stop a continued process or anything like that, if you say cleanup, this thing is cleanup of a pesticide being applied.
Right. And I think the issue that would need to be determined there is, has it done damage or harm to the source water protection area?
Right.
And again, that's a larger discussion. We do cover that in Paragraph B3 under 3901-08. Let's see. Prohibited materials associated with prohibited land use activity or facility shall be remediated immediately and may be punishable by a fine of up to $10,000. Each day of noncompliance shall be considered a separate offense. So that's... Violations and penalties are detailed under 3901-08.
Do you know who drafted that part of it? Was it taken from a different...
It was a... And we haven't really amended 3901-08. We haven't really amended that section, so that's as passed in 2005, I believe, although it was discussed and put together, I think, based on seeing what other source water protection ordinances say around the state of Ohio. Primarily, we talked about the city of Dayton as they are, the pioneer source water protection program in the state of Ohio.
I believe we did increase that fines, Mike, and I don't know if it was the '09 or the '12 when we sat down and we...
Yeah, we did kind of play around with that a little bit. I think there was a question about the...
Meaning the 500 is too low?
Separate from how we included the $10,000 per day if something were to have done. And as Mike knows, he's visited Dayton. They seem to have a real tried and true wellhead protection. Hundreds and hundreds of acres.
They have EPA brownfields sitting on top of their wellfields, so they deal with issues that would be worse nightmare scenario for us here.
Okay, well, let's pull the discussion back to where we're talking about mending 39.
Yeah, 3901-07.
My question is, Bullet Five, it comprehends the list of all fertilizers, pesticides, and so on. When did they make that list? Is it before they plant the first seed or before they...
Right. We would request that information before any kind of operation started whatsoever.
Okay, so you get the list, and you say, okay, Farmer Brown, you go out there, and here's your list. This is what you do. Somewhere mid-season, he decides, I don't wanna use this stuff, I wanna use the different stuff. Now what does he do?
He would have to come back to...
Yeah, but why does that say that here? It doesn't.
That's a good point. It doesn't.
Okay. So I could give you a list, and then six months... Or two months later, and completely violate it, and what are you gonna do about it?
Right. That's a good point. We will address that.
Okay. Which brings me to another point. Suppose someone says they're gonna farm this, and they decide, no, I don't wanna farm it, but I know someone else who does. I'll lease it.
That was what we were approached for last year, was leasing it to another farming operation. And it's still the same approach. We still... Whoever's gonna be running the operation, we want this information. I don't think we would necessarily have a problem with somebody leasing it out to somebody else as long as the details that we're asking for in the ordinance are provided for review.
Yeah, the... I know, I have a problem with that because the more... The farther you get away from the person who's really responsible for the action, the less likely, or the more likely, a violation's going to occur. Something's gonna fall through the crack.
Very good point. So we wanna address ultimate responsibility in the case of a lease then.
Right.
And enforcement, I guess, is kind of...
Well, the other problem you get into is that leases, the leasing may decide, well, I'm not gonna farm 100% of the land, I'm only gonna do 50%, but I just happen to know someone who will. I'll lease my share over to them, or form an agreement. Now, how are they bound by anything that's been done here?
That's a very good point. This does not address that, and we should address limits to a lease-type situation. Good point.
Yeah.
Again, this is a draft. It's up for discussion.
Right.
We want to cut the discussion out as far as we can before we act.
Well, I think I've heard a lot of good ideas and comments here. Jennifer?
Thank you. I do have one more question, and that is, why do we permit the usage of chemicals at all in our wellhead protection area?
We wrestled with that, and we did a lot of consultation with other agencies, and there are... There are compounds that can be used effectively that don't threaten the water supply. We have a very comprehensive set... network of monitoring wells around our source water protection area, and we do watch that, those levels consistently. They're published in the Consumer Confidence Report on an annual basis, so you can see the test results. Again, we're not trying to discourage agricultural activities in reviewing other source water protection ordinances around the state. Doesn't seem like anybody else is interested in that either. We looked at St. Mary's in particular because there is a lot of agricultural activity there, and there was very little mention of agricultural activities in their ordinance. I was kind of surprised about that.
I certainly wouldn't wanna discourage agricultural activities. I would just like to discourage the use of toxic chemicals in our agricultural activities.
Yeah, one is not necessarily related to the other at all. I mean, you can grow a tomato with pesticides or without.
Absolutely. And again, we encourage...
But would we be on legal grounds to do that? Would... If we said, okay, we're going to allow agriculture there, would be then... Are we now opening the door to someone saying, well, listen, part of my business is to use pesticides. I cannot do business without it. Now you're restraining my right to make a living, you know? Restraining the Commerce Clause of the Constitution, something gets thrown in here. I mean, if we wanted to say, no pesticides, no herbicides within the wellhead protection area, and have agriculture at the same time, could we do that? Or if you say, I'm going to allow the one, I have to allow the other?
So you know, we have a number of households in the wellhead protection area as well. We inform them, we educate them, but you have neighbors using Roundup.
True.
So that's... These are some of the things that you struggle with. We also have from another that's come up, the planning commission, when Nancy Bane talked about her Columbus Road corridor. Give me something that says what are activities that can occur. You don't wanna negate a property's value completely. I think that might be a little bit slippery slope. So we've been talking about, we have a model, I think that's from Dayton that you gave us, Mike, about what business you can do in the wellhead protection, so...
Yeah. The city of Dayton does put out a very good publication in their source water protection area, what kind of businesses would be welcome there and what would not be. They do a number of other things that we just simply don't have the resource to do. They have a buyout program where they will actually buy you out and tell you to go somewhere else. You can do that with a big program, lots of money, but that's a resource we don't have here. So again, we're pushing forward with this. We wanna do it right. We're not trying to exclude anybody.
Right.
We're not trying to diminish legitimate use of the acreage, but we do want anyone who decides to operate in our source water protection area to understand what we're trying to protect here. But if we lose... If we lose... Because if we lose, if we lose the armoredish wellfield, we're in a world of hurt because there's no place else to go.
Please repeat that as often as you can.
This is a question for administration that relates. So we're getting ready to do some major construction in the wellhead for our bike trail. So my question is, does that, the people who are doing that construction have the appropriate insurance? And if they were to dump fuel, or a truck would turn over, or a bulldozer would, I mean, that's all happening in our wellhead.
Sure.
So...
And perhaps bringing this forward, you know, I didn't mean, we didn't mean to take up too much time with councils, but we could get an entire wellhead protection or endeavors. Mike is our contract entity through the Athens City County Health Department. He does weekly inspections, sometimes called daily. I call him whenever and is going down there and watching it. Those are both permanent activities. They've had the floodplain regulation review as well as the wellhead protection, so...
Yeah, we have looked at the bike path project in great detail. We don't find anything that raises a fight with us.
My thing is, when they're actually down there doing the construction, will we occasionally have someone down there just checking it out?
Project inspectors on that as well. And to back it all the way up, there's also an inventory of every operation and what they have and their facility that is provided. Mike, can he checks on that biannually?
Yeah, we try to keep up on chemical inventory at facilities in the source water protection area. There's a handful of them that we have concerns about, but by and large, it's mostly office space. But there are a few entities that we keep a pretty close eye on because of the chemical storage and potential there.
Anything else? I have nothing else.
I just have a process question. So now our questions will go back to the wellhead team.
Right. We meet again the 25th of March, and we will put a final draft to the law director and hopefully get back to you all and we'll move forward. But please feel free to contact me anytime with concerns about this. It's an ongoing thing. We consider Title 39 to be a fluid dynamic document that needs to be looked at on a regular basis, not only in this respect, but anything else that citizens or council would come up with that I think we need to look at in more detail. Please let us know.
Member Butler?
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Crippen, for being here.
My pleasure.
I know representing the West Side in the first ward, I've been approached on more than one occasion by Westsiders expressing their concerns and worries and fears about the wellhead protection. And a Westsider, Auditor Hect, helped create this legislation when she was on council. So it is an important issue here, obviously, and I appreciate your hard work on this as well.
We like to look at it occasionally, and we feel like if it needs to be changed, we'll go through the process and change it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless administration has miscellaneous, I can't think of anything for planning a development.
Okay. We'll move on to city and safety services with Councilmember Butler chairing.
Thank you, President Mize. Our first item topic here is a presentation by Mr. Glenn Crippen, who is with the HAPCAP Community Development Coordinator for Community Action. And HAPCAP is the Hawking Athens County Community Action. And again, this is a good update for us, so appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. The reason for me being here this evening is to provide some information to council and administration as well. Our agency is the CHIP administrator currently in the city of Athens. There's a 2014 program that was awarded two years ago. It was a $1.2 million program. However, the city is ineligible jurisdiction to be a participating partner in a larger partnership for the CHIP program. And just before I get too far into this, the CHIP program is a community housing impact and preservation program. It is a federally funded program that is administered by the Ohio Development Services Agency, and the awards are dealt out competitively. So the city of Athens, our offices have been coordinating with the administration of the city to hopefully partner again with Athens County and the city of Nelsonville to have three entities comprised together to go for or submit to the Ohio Development Services Agency for another round of funding, which is coming up here this year. The application due date is May 6th, and we are busy at work forming the partnership, talking to the various administrations, working with the county commissioners. My counterpart Greg Andrews is in Nelsonville doing the same thing this evening, speaking to them about this opportunity that we have as a partnership. The incentive for a jurisdiction to participate in a partnership is more money. If the city wanted to apply to the Ohio Development Services Agency on its own, it would only be eligible for $250,000. The incentive to be included in the partnership or be a participating partner is an extra amount. It would then be eligible for $400,000. The overall grant request will be $1.2 million. So the way that that works is we are in the process of talking to the communities about the partnership. Ultimately, the goal we will be working towards is forming a partnership agreement, which is a piece of, which is a document that will result from, well, it will contain a lot of information. Some bits of information that it will contain are the results of our HAC meeting, HAC Housing Advisory Council meeting, which will occur this Wednesday from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the community center. This is a meeting where we invite housing providers, communities, everyone that has a role in the process. We invite their input. We talk about the various eligible activities in the program, what type of funding is involved, when the work would occur, and all the ins and outs. So from that process, we identify what activities the community believes are feasible to complete. It's very important that whatever activities we propose or the activities we carry out and do it responsibly and in a timely manner, because it is a competitive program. Administrative capacity is a very big scoring criteria, about 25 points or so. So the results of that HAC meeting, which help identify the activities that are feasible, which typically in the past are owner rehab and repair and rental, home rehab and home repair are the four main or large activities in the program, and also down payment assistance and new home construction, which we've often collaborated with Habitat for Humanity to partner with them to build homes for qualified households. So I just wanted to provide this information as, you know, as where we are now. The next step will be having the HAC meeting, and then we will be putting together a partnership agreement, and then we will be, in the future, in April or late March, I suppose, coordinating with the city to authorize the mayor to sign that partnership agreement. So that will be a resolution, I do believe, and we will address that in the future, not tonight necessarily, but that's where we are. Just wanted to provide some information on the program and let you know where we're at, so...
Glenn, we have some current programs going on now that we just recently did some push out for, for, I don't know, was it rental rehabilitation?
Okay. Through CHIP?
Mm-hmm. I'd ask Greg to provide where we were to date sometime.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, an update. The 2014 program will end here in late August, is work completion. We're very near completing that whole program and meeting the goals and the outcomes proposed in the grant application. We just did provide a thorough report to the mayor. We'd be happy to send that to council as well, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Crippen. I think we do have a couple of questions and comments from my colleagues on council.
Sure.
So I think it's important for people to know kind of what the income guidelines are, because this isn't a broad type of program.
It isn't. It's for households that are at 80% of the area median income. This is based on HUD's income limits for any given year. Currently, HUD has not released 2016 income limits, but we are going on 2015 still. So for instance, a household of one, the area median household for a household of one member in Athens County is currently $31,200. So to be eligible for this assistance, your household income for a family or a household of one would need to be at 80% of $31,200, for instance. When the new data comes out, 2016 HUD income limits is released, could be any day now, could be as late as May. That data won't change very much at all, if at all, but it will likely stay the same. So I think, you know, the next increment up for a family or a household of two is not much more than $31,200. I think it's $35,600 perhaps. So it goes up incrementally with the number of people in the household, and it is, so low to moderate income, LMI, is at 80% of that area median income, however many people are in the household at the given time of testing for eligibility.
So a family of four is probably 40...
40, 42. I can get some exact numbers to you for that, if you'd like. Be happy to do that. Yeah, 80% of that is LMI. So they have different thresholds, too. 50% and 35% as well are considered low income and very low income, and some of the activities are reserved for very low income households, low income households, but the ultimate threshold is 80% of area median income. That constitutes an LMI household.
Mayor, did you have a comment or question as well?
Just a scoring improvement, isn't there, with the partnership versus applying a loan?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Anyone who is partnering or having three eligible jurisdictions in a partnership is going to score better. Last year, our agency worked with Hawking County, the city of Logan, and Perry County to form a cross-county partnership, and it was the highest funded CHIP program in the state. So for having three communities is very beneficial, and even though the county would be the lead, the lead in the application, it would, you know, they would be the green tea. They would be responsible for the program. However, the way that we budget the program is that, you know, there's a certain amount set out for the geographical area of the city of Athens, and it would be $400,000, so...
I want to acknowledge that I appreciate you also taking time to explain some of this because this is maybe the first time for some of us on council or those in TV land hearing what you're accomplishing and what happens in our partnership and our ability to work and collaborate. So if there's anything else, too, that you think is beneficial for us to hear as well as those in TV land?
Sure. It's a very flexible program, and it's very competitive. It's very, a lot of people are applying for the money. So it's important that we collaborate. The state wants to see collaboration. They want to see innovative partnerships, such as, you know, what we do with Habitat for Humanity to build a new home. They want to see us in the community, making people aware, such as this right now. So it's very good to get the word out. It'll be very interesting to have our meeting Wednesday at the community center from 11:00 to 1:00. And that meeting has a certain list of attendees or people that we are, the state asks that we invite. It's not something we select. It's a group of agencies, Metropolitan Housing, for instance, and other housing providers. They want to see a very specific list of people attending these meetings, community development organizations such as ourselves and so forth. So we will be talking about all the demographics and what activities are eligible, what's doable, and getting a consensus and a unified, getting on a unified front to present the application to the state in May, so...
Could you extend? I have not seen the invitation. Could we get copied and we can share it with council as well for the HAC meeting?
Absolutely.
For Wednesday's meeting? Yeah.
Send it out first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions from council members? Was that, did you acknowledge, was it a June deadline on your, is that correct?
May 6th for the CHIP.
Okay.
June is for the infrastructure side of CBPG.
Okay. So the CHIP deadline was June or May?
May 6th.
Thank you.
It's a Friday. The application is all done online, very long and tedious process.
So confirmation from us needs to be acknowledged by, confirmation from us, our involvement and support?
Confirmation, that will come through the ordinance.
Right. I mean, how soon? We need to be jumping on this soon.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
To wait to see what comes out of the HAC and then meeting for that.
All right.
The state also likes to see, just one last thing, you know, just a little bit of information. The state likes to see the community pursuing activities for which no other funds in the community are available. For instance, tenant-based rental assistance is one eligible activity in the CHIP program, but there's a lot of tenant-based rental assistance in the community, through Metropolitan Housing, for instance. So they want to see the CHIP money be used for activities that aren't being funded through any other funding agency. It's very unique in that way, and it's the only resource that a lot of low to moderate income households have to rehabilitate their home or repair their home and preserve the affordable housing stock in the community.
And rehabilitation could be as extensive as a paint job on the outside, or it could be weatherization or...
Yeah. The rehabs are larger projects, up to $35,000 approximately, and everything is addressed from the roof to the foundation. Home repair projects are smaller in nature and range from roof repairs to furnace replacements and so forth, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong, for the repair assistance for a homeowner, it's up to $11,000 per repair?
Correct.
So some significant repairs.
It is, yeah. And rehab's even much larger than that, so...
Yeah, you said rehab was about how much?
I think up to $35,000.
Thank you.
That's approximate. I know it's very high like that, but I will not say that that is exact.
No, thank you.
But it's significant.
Thank you.
And so in our last program in '14, where we were working collaboratively, and I think safety service director mostly referred to it like an update, have we, do you have any information tonight about where we are with meeting those goals on the...
I know the program is largely complete. There's, I think there's one, I don't want to be poor on specifics. I don't have the specific update on the program. I know it's, we're going to meet our outcomes. The program will be successful, and I can gladly get you some more specific information.
That's great to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. It's an important partnership.
Thank you. It's an honor to be involved in it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a presentation update from Director Matt Green from our Athens Community Television. Matt has passed out updates and I believe even a request, too.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
First of all, I got to say how much I miss these meetings.
Really? Is that sarcasm or...
No. For those of you that do not know me, Matt Green, the director of Athens Community Television, public access TV station here in Athens. We're kind of like the government channel, but more available for community members to come in and create their own television programs or pretty much whatever they want to do. So I think Councilmember Reisner suggested he might have a new show coming out about drones. Just a quick overview of 2015. One thing that really took off last year was our online video presence. I finally kind of got it through our local producers' heads, like, nobody's going to watch your show online unless you start telling them about it. So last year, we had 7,120 views on our YouTube page with an average of 593 a month, and that resulted in over 1,788 hours of total watch time. So average of about five hours a week of people watching just locally produced programming on our YouTube channel. So far in 2016, I think it was last Thursday, I looked at the stats again, we've already had 1,905 views and 823 hours on our YouTube page. As far as what we've aired on the station, during 2015, we had 436 programs turned into us to be aired on Channel 9, a total of 418 hours of locally produced programming. Which 418 hours doesn't sound like a lot, but if you factor in the amount of time it takes for someone to go out and shoot one hour of footage... amount of time it takes for someone to go out and shoot one hour of footage, bring it back to the studio, edit their, well, they probably go and shoot like two hours of footage and then edit it down to an hour or half an hour, and then give it to the TV station, we then have to encode it to go on the air, go to YouTube, schedule it to be played, there's a lot of time involved in four hundred and eighteen hours of program.
Yeah.
We had six hundred and eighty-three people, you know, sign our sign-in sheet when they walk through the door. Most of the time, people do that, sometimes they walk on by, but it helps us keep a good idea of how many people are coming into the facility. That total, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two hours of bodies in the facility using equipment, recording a show, or just checking equipment out to go out in the field and shoot video. We added six new community producers last year. We also had six hundred and forty equipment rentals. So when somebody comes in, they might check out a camera kit, which would be a camera, a tripod, you know, the case, like all the components that go with that. And I have been, I'm not gonna say this in stone, I've been in contact with Alexander High School's Broadcasting Club Director, and it's been a slow-moving process, I think they only meet like once a month during like a special activity period to try and get those students involved. They obviously have somewhat of an interest in broadcasting or television, since they're in a broadcasting club, so I'm still trying to push forward on that and get my foot in the door in the Alexander School with that club being the main focus. I'm hoping that it works out. And I've also, I've spoken to Al, or Athens High School a few times with their Vice Principal and trying to get them all rolling there. In April, we will be having our next board meeting, which Councilmember Reisner is now a member of, and I'm hoping I can get some good feedback from the Board of Directors, ideas on maybe how to utilize them as bodies to go out to the schools and try and get, you know, younger students involved. Have some OU students that I've been working with to kind of get the OU Video Production majors in to bring some, some youth to the station, I should say. As far as our demographic, people that create programming, we get a lot of retired folks, you know, they like making television shows, I think it's awesome.
The way that comes to mind.
Yes. We, we are missing that younger demographic as far as producers, and, and last summer, I had a ten-year-old come in and kind of hang out for a couple of weeks, and he was a blast to work with, but there were some issues as far as his parents being concerned with him being on television, and for a few times, we had to edit out information of, you know, where he lived and where his best friend lived and stuff like that. He just, you know, stayed right on camera, didn't think about it, so. So those are kind of our statistics and what my goals are for this year. Any questions so far?
Go ahead, President Nigley.
That's great news about the Alexander High School Broadcasting Club, and I hope it moves, moves forward. Do you have, and with the high school, do you have an expected start date?
The Athens High School?
Either, or either one of them.
I do not. I think I'm gonna have to try and set a hard face-to-face meeting instead of talking over the phone or emails, 'cause it's just, you, you get a response and then time passes, and so I think we're just gonna have to pin down a time where we can actually have a conversation face-to-face.
So I know you were interested in expanding this when you reported to us last year.
Right.
So this is good, you've got some progress, but...
I've made some progress, I, I mean, I don't blame school administration, their main goal is not to work with nonprofits and they're, they're for education purposes, not for the extracurriculars, so to say, but when I first started running public access, ten years ago now, we had Athens High School students that were involved, and they ended up going to college for video production, and I, one of them is living in Columbus, I think he's working at BoSI, he's doing some multimedia stuff for them, so. It is a good learning tool to start out as a teenager and, you know, move into college. And we've also had students that were heavily involved in public access, but then went to college and then went to law school and basically did nothing with television, but I'm, I'm sure that there's some role of their hobby that played into what they did in college and their career.
I would, I would say in school, if a teacher changes, and that was your main link, and there's a new teacher that comes in, that's why it's almost a constant kind of relationship that you have to, to, you know, just kind of keep working on over time, because you kind of lose the, you know, the credibility and the contact, so...
Right.
I think that's a constant, you probably have to show up there and meet with whoever it is and, and have that conversation. I did want to mention on your nonprofit chapter, organizations, that there no longer is any Tri-County Mental Health and Counseling Services, Inc. That doesn't exist any longer.
Did they change their name?
Yes, it's Hopewell Health Services.
Okay.
Thanks for catching that.
Thanks for pointing that out.
It's been a couple of years now.
A question I had or comment was your acknowledgement that six hundred and forty equipment rentals this past year, average of fifty-three rentals per month, and then looking back at 2014, records, there is indicating that there is still an increase in use, so I think that's a good sign, especially considering how these items are mobile and...
Right.
...and available to make video and...
We, we have some people that like to try and shoot video with their phones and bring it in, and they usually have it, you know, as a portrait instead of landscape, and then they don't understand why it's long and skinny and not filling the screen. So we try to encourage people not to use their phones, but if they want to, they can. So, yeah, and a lot of people, like, the cameras that we have, they're not the most expensive, most elaborate pieces of equipment, because they get used and abused and they do, they do break down. The trade-off is more expensive pieces of equipment, you can usually get parts for and have repaired, but by the time you pay for the parts and the repair, you could buy another cheaper throwaway type piece of equipment. For instance, we have a small handheld Canon, and the connection where you plug the power supply in, it broke. Well, simple solution, the camera still works, so simple solution, we bought a battery charger so that camera cannot operate being plugged into electricity, you have to use a battery. So we bought, you know, a twenty-five-dollar battery charger, so the camera's still functional. Because I called Canon and tried to get a replacement part, oh, no, we don't sell replacement parts for that, we just throw them away. They're, they're throwaway parts. So, and it was, if you, it was an easy fix, but the part didn't exist, I couldn't buy the part to repair it. It was unsoldered floor pins and soldering their piece in, but the part, you can't buy the part, so.
So Matt, you have a request in your, and I did want to say, I've spoken with Matt because our Stornwater Protection Team that meets also wants to start utilizing as another educational outreach, the ACTV, so we're planning on doing some PSAs through that as well. And I believe the mayor has a correction to your math, so.
Oh, great.
Small correction, when I looked at your, the combination of option one and option two, you had eleven thirty-three oh four, and it should be seventeen thirty-three oh four.
No. It's, option one and option two are separate from each other. The reason I put option two there is the camcorder, the, the first item in option one, that camcorder is currently listed as limited stock, so I don't know if we can get that particular one, and if not, I will have to go with the one that's listed in option two instead. So...
So it's, option two is a replacement for...
For that camcorder in option one.
Been nice to have clear, okay.
Even though it's called the same thing, it's...
Yeah, it's a different model number, same brand, and...
Gotcha.
One's a fifty and the other's a sixty.
Gotcha.
So, and the one in option one is currently on sale, I don't know how long it'll stay that way and how many they'll have in stock.
Okay.
Because I, I typically work with D and H Photo, they give us some decent nonprofit discounts, and we try to purchase from them.
Yeah, they're reputable.
So I'm assuming that would come from cable access funds for that. I mean, we like to round because we don't want to have to come back for pennies, so...
Super.
So you may see a future appropriation for twelve to thirteen hundred dollars?
Yeah, and I think the last batch of cameras we got in mid-2014, we still have all three of those. One of them, you know, did have a broken part on it that I can't fix, but it's still functional and usable. And I recently, yeah, purchased a fourth handheld camera, just out of the money that Access currently has, to kind of replace the one that was broken, to alleviate, you know, if somebody goes somewhere where they're gonna shoot five hours of footage and they can't plug the camera in or find out a lot, because we don't have five, six hours worth of battery on these cameras.
Yeah, thank you. I, I support this, and I, to me, it's a small investment for what you're accomplishing down there in the...
I appreciate it.
You're welcome, the connections you're making with people and moving forward.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, we have a request from the mayor's office to replace two sanitary sewer trucks, so we have disposal and replacement. These are diesel trucks, and I believe the mayor's office has a little bit of an update for us on some of the demise or details regarding these trucks.
Now, you asked for that, I don't, in terms of, you'd asked for the age and what have you, but when our Director of Public Works is coming to us saying that these have reached or exceeded their useful life, we respect that and want to move forward with replacements, so.
Yeah, and as I understand it, the, the beds of these trucks, the back end is, is still a usable piece, so it works, it's fine, it's replacing the chassis and the cab of the trucks moving forward, so it's being resourceful in that way. But each of the trucks are gonna be under fifty thousand dollars, likely needing to appropriate more than that.
Okay. So you're telling us that these trucks are gonna see a second life because the bed is okay, and that we're gonna replace the...
The bed will receive a second life, the truck itself, you know, they're old, they've got their high miles, they're, they're exhausting.
So they'll just order the truck without the bed and put the old bed on the new truck?
You can order just chassis with the, the cab, the drive train and everything else, you're just replacing, pulling off the old bed and putting it onto a new truck.
Appreciate that thriftiness.
And he believes it can go through the entire three readings, like this time, there's nine emergency, but if there's a breakdown, we'll let you know.
Do you, do you want to happen to describe to us what a sanitary sewer truck looks like or what it does?
I think you've seen them, I think there's the ones, this is not our VACON that comes down, but it's the laborers' machines when they're out there and they're pulling the different tools and what have you off the truck. I know that Jeff stops by and visits with them when they're out there, so...
So super utilitarian, because it has so much equipment with it?
Right.
And H, we'll get you that information, I apologize, and I'll have it this evening.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay, then the next item we have is a rapid water line replacement, so in my conversation with our city service safety director, this is an effort by our Public Works Director to tackle two projects at once, so as we're looking at paving Avon and Grand Park, while we're there, tearing it up, we're working on it, it makes sense to continue to upgrade and replace the water line, that's my understanding.
Right, this is project three oh three, which is the rapid water line replacement. Three oh four is the repaving, not just of Grand Park and Avon, but several streets over in the Far East neighborhood. But those, the other streets, their water lines are fine, but this is, is in typical fashion for city engineers knowing, let's get it right the first time, put in new rapid, or rapid replacement of the water lines and then pave over them rather than have them fail later and have to chew up perfectly good asphalt to reseal the, the pipes, so. And unfortunately, in front of me, I don't have the actual, the dollar amount, but I, we believe, I believe it's somewhere in the two hundred thousand dollar range that we're talking about for the rapid water line replacement.
Thank you.
Just know that that could be subject to change when we get the firm numbers for what that's gonna cost, please.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. So moving on to miscellaneous, I believe we have a little bit of an update on the opportunity for us to enhance our 911 program here. The mayor's office has, is in receipt of an email from the Director, Dan Pfeifer, who is the Director of Athens County 911 Emergency Communications, and it appears, and be patient with me and us, as I try to make sense of some of this in the email, but it appears that there was a mistake when we applied for funding for the Athens County Enhanced Communications Project, we were mistakenly approved for three hundred thousand dollars instead of the five hundred thousand dollars. But there is a potential for fixing this mistake if we partner, and it would be a grant rather than a loan, and that would be for five hundred thousand dollars, and this is the Local Government Safety Capital Grant Program, LGSC as in CAT-G, LGSCG. So we do need to move forward in this partnership, we need a new project memorandum of understanding and resolution. The deadline or the application dates would be between February sixteenth and March twenty-first is the closing of that window. Anything else you can think of that...
No, just, you, we had a presentation, I don't know, Bob Ikenbergh came, it was last fall, it was for a loan, they were awarded the loan, but now they have the opportunity to go back and apply this for the grant. The reason it's been delayed is we spent some time talking with our own staff about, is there something else that we want to proceed, pursue, like the Public Safety Complex, but that is an ineligible project at this time. So we kind of wound back up to, let's go ahead and support this, it's our understanding, they'll have a greater chance of receiving the fund if they show this collaboration, and there may be some enhanced communications that we're able to tap into once this project is, comes to fruition. So it's a one-reading resolution on Monday.
And our partnerships would include Nelsonville, correct? The county...
They may have another village or townships, but...
In the city, but...
Yeah. Thank you. President Nigley.
So it's a grant application as opposed to a loan, so it's a no, we're not losing anything, we're only potentially gaining, is what I'm hearing from you, we partner.
Yeah, this is, it's something that is certainly gonna enhance the county's communication. As you're all aware, the city's worked very hard on the MARK system, which is a tried-and-true communication system, but this is, this is being good players and good stewards of the county and our city in collaborating with them on this project.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council or the mayor's office?
So as we look at it right now, it's OU, City of Athens, City of Nelsonville, Athens Township, and somebody else? Edgell Networks LLC, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just looking at the memorandum of understanding.
Right, I think that covers it.
Okay.
Looking at the fine print.
Athens Township, yeah.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions? Is there any miscellaneous before we close up?
There is one. And that is that you may, some may be aware or not aware, that the Spring Cleanup Week is April 18th...
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Through the 22nd. And then, but more importantly, or equally important, I find it more important, the Household Hazardous Waste Disposal is Saturday, the 23rd. And that said, there's going to need to be appropriations of $15,000 for that program too, out of six, or 760 TC300 for that particular part on the 23rd.
So I have a question on that, on the $15,000. Does it matter how much they take in, or that's the automatic amount that it costs every year? So if we take in less or more, does it cost less or more?
Correct. It's a placeholder, and it's averaged closer to $11,000 to $12,000, but we want, you know, we don't know at what point do we get 150 additional cars. And it's split between Athens Township based on participation in the City of Athens, so we'll be doing more outreach as we get a little bit closer to it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This was a question for Cleanup Week. Is there any, any kind of effort going to be made to put any kind of larger dumpsters in Athens during the move-out week for the students? Has anyone considered that?
Those are separate endeavors, that's under the move-out. And we'll, I believe they're still planning the similar endeavors that we did last year that were one of the best ever, where you had different locations for dropping off furniture versus appliances, food pantry drop-off and those kind of things.
I know there's a really good effort for the reusable items, but I know during the move-out week, there's a lot of trash that's just left too, but I just wondered, is there any effort at all to team up the trash week, which seems to be like a week or two before the students move out and putting dumpsters, so...
Well, then you don't assign the cost to the users, is what, I mean, we are really attempting to go to that pay-as-you-throw. And so as students move out, what they leave is charged to their account. Then when the property owners move in, they're responsible for that, as opposed to making that free service for all. During the spring cleanup, okay, you can do a number of bags. Anything that's larger than that, you have to make arrangements for, and we're in discussion about the service garage and modifying that, because that really resulted in overtime and costs associated with that. And move-out is a different, you know, some landlords provide adequate...
Larue.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Just, I just wondered whether that, that was even being considered, because I know over the past, when students have come and talked to us, they've been somewhat shocked by some of the bills they receive from the landlords for the trash that's left out. And they would dump it if they had a place to dump it. They would transport it to the place. And I know with the spring cleanup, down at the end of State Street, isn't it? People can dump for free, etc.
That's something that we're exploring right now with that, because with that comes cost, more cost on the city.
Sure.
We're looking at overtime for people to stand there and sometimes during times when there's not a lot of people coming to drop things off, yet it's still overtime, so we're exploring that.
Okay.
We're looking at the most cost-effective way to make this work in the long run, sustainable.
I know everybody hates the sight in Athens, though, when there are piles of garbage during move-out week, and anything that would expedite getting rid of it, I think would be helpful, too.
I have a comment about that. We haven't had a KACB meeting in quite some time, and we organized much of that move-out during that meeting. I don't know if that's a new Ron Lucas venture or whatever, but we, we really haven't had a, you know, to keep Athens clean and beautiful for quite some months. And we always reviewed during that meeting, an early spring meeting, we would review what move-out was going to look like and where the dumpsters were going and how the not-for-profits were collecting the recyclables, so...
They've been meeting. I can ask for that information, but they are indeed meeting. We met with Bruce Underwood from Athens Hawking Recycling Center last week. They talked about those endeavors. There's actually a request for recycling of mattresses that we all pretty much said this does not compute in this day and age, so with health-related issues. But I can ask to get that updated, and it will be going out with the, we're kind of in the middle of something else right now, but it will be going out with the community, what do you, communities...
Utility bills, oh, the community assistance.
Ambassadors, yes, and going around to identify, so.
Thank you. And nothing else?
Okay, then we'll move on to our last committee meeting tonight, Finance and Personnel, chaired by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. On the agenda, I have the Presbyterian Parking Lot Lease Renewal.
This does not expire until the, where is my last date here?
July.
Thank you, end of July, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I'll start this negotiation and see how it goes. And this, as you know, is for the property where we're able to park the police vehicles and also the adjacent lot. But there was some concern last time, three years ago, that the cost continues to escalate. So the council had asked for me to look at some other opportunities or options, and so we'll begin that discussion. I'm not asking for any action, I just want to get it on the radar while in advance, so...
Anyone have any questions about this?
I could provide you all a copy of the current contract as well.
What are we paying now?
We're currently paying $44,337 a year within this annual contract, and it'll increase by 1,000 under this, the proposed for 2016, July of...
July 29th, yeah.
Right, July 29th.
What already started.
2013 to 14 was 43046.
I have not reached out yet to the Presbyterian Church, I will.
And that lot is used for overflow for police or...
Use the college lot fees, but they also receive a portion of those fees. And so I think we just need to look and see what's really working well for us.
Has there ever been a time when we didn't redo the lease?
Yes, I was told it was disastrous. Somebody told me there were police cars parked all over the...
Yeah, that's...
And being able to reach...
I thought my memory was right.
Being able to go out the door and jump in your car is kind of critical, so...
It can be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we can do, especially, thank you.
Well, do the best you can.
Yes.
Next, I have appropriations, and I have a few little items here. I'll start with this one. Have a request from Pam Bolton, requesting funds an amount of $45,000 in the Kirk's Computer Fund, 231 TC500 be transferred to TC300. So I have no more questions.
From out of capital into professional services?
Yeah. And talking about the Household Hazardous Waste just a moment ago, we'll actually have to appropriate that $15,000. And it'll come from 670 TC300. So $15,000 is our ballpark figure. Hopefully it'll be less, but, and not more, but let's work with that. I have a document here from Ryan Schwarzkoff, City of Athens, for apparently a couple of, well, a laptop and some hardware for an amount of $883.63 and a few other odds and ends, which would probably knock it up to close to about 1,000.
Yeah, we'll take that up to 1,000, I think. That's for Code Office.
Yeah. So that's, where do you, I believe the auditor sent me an email and conject about this matter, and said there was no money in the 500s. I was wondering where they're going to pull it from.
General Fund.
General Fund, 101.
Code is out of General Fund.
Okay. Do you know where it's coming from? And let's see, before we talked about the request from Public Access Television, so thanks to you, that's all done, so. Miscellaneous, does anyone have any miscellaneous? Try once, twice, sold. So I have nothing. We're done.
We'll consider ourselves adjourned at 9:24 PM, and we'll be back next Monday night.